I would like to call the meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of January 5th, 2021. Happy New Year, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
And Councilmember, or excuse me, Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. Our first order of business is a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's right here, yeah. I just wanted to read the... Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is for the respect and sanctity of life, and I wanted to give a brief history that the city included in their packet, that the Central Coast Citizens for Family and Life was started over 33 years ago by Mrs. Pat Reely. The organization operates with the mission that human life is sacred from conception to natural death. Each year, Respect for Life Week is commemorated throughout the United States with large prayer gatherings and walks. Central Coast Citizens for Family and Life requests this proclamation each year to raise awareness of the cause. And with that, whereas for over 33 years, the Central Coast Citizens for Family and Life have been celebrating respect for life in Santa Maria, and whereas it is imperative that residents of the community defend human life at all ages and conditions of dependency and protect the disabled, the handicapped, and those defenseless in every way. And whereas this year's Respect for Life Week is being celebrated January 18th through January 24th, and whereas respect for life is a vital issue that invites full public awareness, now therefore Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria hereby recognizes the week of January 18th through the 24th, 2021, as Respect for Life Week in the City of Santa Maria and encourages full awareness of this issue. And this proclamation will be mailed to John Lindgram.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waterfield.
You're welcome.
The next, we have an introduction and swearing in of our new police chief. Mr. Stillwell, would you like to do the introduction?
Sure, I'd be honored to, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We're proud to introduce Chief Mark Schneider as the new police chief for the City of Santa Maria. Unfortunately, we were required due to social distancing to do the badge pinning and the oath of office remotely on a private event to avoid social gatherings and potential spread of the COVID pandemic, but we do have video of that, and we can show it here. And then we have Chief Schneider here in the audience as well for a few words, and also on an update of the recent activities going on in the city. So we're pleased to announce Chief Mark Schneider.
... and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign, domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign, domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take your publication freely.
That I take your publication freely.
Without internal reservation.
Without internal reservation.
Or purpose of the reading.
Or purpose of the reading.
And that I will well pay for it.
And that I will well pay for it.
Discharge of duties.
Discharge of duties.
I'm answering.
I forgot about that.
Somehow, yeah.
Okay.
See, and that's a professional effort there. No. It's a lot harder than that looked.
It was nice of him to have his daughter putting the badge on him.
Yeah, it was nice. He had a... His wife, obviously, was there, and a few family members, but it was nice for us to be able to videotape that, share the moment with the community and the city council, you know, doing what we can in order to recognize these important events to the city, given the constraints that we have. But we're proud to have Mark Schneider here as our chief. He's been with the police department, the Santa Maria Police Department, for decades in every rank in the department. He's been our commander for several years now and has rotated through the different command positions and the different oversight throughout the department. And we're just very fortunate to be able to have someone with Mark's experience and his vision and understanding of the Santa Maria community and the Santa Maria Police Department to be able to lead us and take the helm, and we're fortunate to have him here within the police department and being able to be our next chief. So please welcome Mark as our police chief, and then, Mark, if you'd like to say any words, we'd love to welcome you.
Yay.
Watching a home video there.
Yeah. Thank you very much, and I just have a few brief comments I would like to share with everyone. It's an honor to have been selected as a new police chief for the City of Santa Maria, and a real privilege to be able to continue to serve the community and to work alongside the members of the men and women of the police department. I'm so proud to be part of that department, and I'm just very grateful for this opportunity. The department has developed a very strong culture of service, and I promise that the men and women will continue to serve the community with courage, dignity, and in accordance with the law. I know the position of police chief comes with a tremendous responsibility, a responsibility to maintain and look for opportunities to enhance the trust between the community and its police department, as well as ensuring that the City of Santa Maria is a safe place for residents to work, live, and raise their families. Having spent the vast majority of my 28 years in law enforcement with the Santa Maria Police Department and as a current and longtime resident of Santa Maria, these responsibilities are especially meaningful to me, and I take them very seriously because I care deeply about the community and our department, and I want to see the community thrive and the department continue to succeed and move forward. So in closing, I promise to the men and women of the police department that I will always do my best to be a positive reflection of the department and to be honest, fair, and objective with you and my interactions. And we will undoubtedly face challenges as a department and as a profession, but I'm confident that we will only come out stronger as a result of these challenges. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity, and I look forward to what lies ahead for 2021. Thank you.
Did you want me to share some information on our last... Sure, I'd be fine.
Okay. So on the homicide that occurred on December 18th, it was a phenomenal job by our officers, our crime lab and our detective bureau. And, you know, we're three divisions in the department, and each division is made up of different specialty units, so it would seem that we're sort of siloed, but, you know, but actually what we are is a team, and when one of those units or divisions isn't working, the entire department, it makes it difficult for us to succeed. But on this date, December 18th, the officers that responded to that shooting and what turned out to be a homicide, they did a phenomenal job. They did what they're trained to do. They secured the scene, they located potential witnesses before they could leave, you know, they were able to speak with people and identify them. Our crime lab came out after hours, and they processed and collected some key evidence that was involved with that shooting. And we did an extensive canvas, almost 30 blocks, and I'm told that we actually viewed almost 50 videos from residents within that 30-block radius. And as a result of those videos, some key evidence was developed and actually obtained as part of that canvas. And what was emphasized to me by the investigators was the amount of cooperation from the residents. They were very taken back by how helpful they were. And during that time, it was nearly, you know, 17 investigators that worked for several days, and once they developed information on the suspect, they prepared some search warrant affidavits and arrest affidavits for the suspect, and they were able to identify the fact that he was over in Lindsay, California, which is in Tulare County. And they were phenomenal. We reached out to their investigators, and they set up a team, and they started surveillance on a location where they believed he may be located. And within 24 hours of that surveillance, they identified him and took him into custody for us, and we sent several investigators over with search warrant in hand to search a residence over there and actually take physical custody of the suspect and bring him back to Santa Barbara County and put him in jail. So it was just a great job, and once again, it just sort of emphasizes, you know, between patrol, our crime lab, detective bureau, everybody working together and being successful and within four days, you know, apprehending the suspect and taking him off the street and putting him in jail where he needs to be. So I just wanted to highlight that and just let you know that they're doing a phenomenal job, and there's lots of challenges with COVID and all the different things that are being thrown at us each day, and I'm just encouraged by their hard work, and I'm proud to be part of the department and working with them. So thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Chief Schneider, and congratulations on your new appointment.
Thank you very much.
Just, Madam Mayor, just by way of closure, closing, I just want to reaffirm the job that... Reaffirm what Chief Schneider said about the job our police department did. It was just a top-notch, professional job. It demonstrates both the commitment they have to the community, but also the support they receive from the community. It really took our police being out there to work with the community and the community working with us to be able to catch this alleged murderer who fled the county, and we were able to get him quickly and bring him back, and now we'll hold him to justice. So it's just something to recognize that we have this police force in the community, and we should be proud of it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stillwell. I had contacted Sue Anderson from Dignity Health, asking her what the latest is, because what was the latest yesterday is not necessarily the latest today, as we all know, and how fluid this pandemic is and how it's hitting us. And so I asked her to briefly tell me what was going on, because I'd like to read something to the community and give them an update. And she said, "Marion, our outpatient COVID-plus patient numbers are higher than ever. We are over 80 positive and inpatients and more coming in every day. Throughout Santa Barbara County, we are experiencing this surge. We need the community to take masking seriously. One of our frontline physicians said to me yesterday that people need to understand that this is real. People in our community are dying due to the pandemic, and we need to take this seriously. Please don't let up. We're almost there with the vaccines. We did vaccinate the majority of hospital staff and physicians, and CBS came through our skilled nursing facility and vaccinated almost all staff and residents. The hospital is very busy with COVID, but we are open, safe, and the emergency department is here to serve our community for whatever needs there are." So I want to thank Sue very much for this, and I know that you have an update on the city.
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So in continuing with the vaccination that Sue Anderson talked about, so those have started this week for city employees. The county and the state is prioritizing based on type of work that the city employees do, so our first responders are the first ones getting vaccinated this week, and that includes our firefighters and first responders and police. It'll also include concrete care employees, which we don't have any directly as a city, but that's in that first wave as well. And as the vaccine continues to roll out, we'll be able to vaccinate the other police and fire personnel, the emergency response personnel who aren't right there on the front lines but are supporting the effort, and then other essential workers within the city. So we're closely in contact with the county, working with them on coordinating sites. Right now, the site they're using is at the Betaravia Center, the county building down on Betaravia, and we are working with them to expand that either into some of our community centers, working with CBS, Walgreens to use their facilities, potentially use Hancock facilities, and as you mentioned, Marion has onsite for them as well. So the vaccines are in our community, they are starting, they may have started off a little slow, but they are on the schedule that they plan to be, and we are actively vaccinating people. And then as far as the city, we're in the same boat as the community and as Marion, where we have a number of employees who are out, I think an employee at least in every department is out either with a COVID positive or quarantining because there, someone in their household or family has tested positive. And so it's impacting us as an organization as it's impacting the community. We're fortunate still, we have these very robust safety plans that we've been developing very rigorously since March and updating them as laws change, as science changes, and as the health orders change. And again, we want to recognize our risk management team and Melissa Guerrero for really leading that effort, but it's the departments who are updating those safety plans to make sure they work for their operations, and it's the employees who are complying with those safety plans. So we haven't had an onsite spread in the city due to the health and safety plans that we have in place. And when we... We've been fortunate, though, that the majority of the COVID positives we have have been community spread as other people are experiencing it through our community. So it's... I'd reiterate what Sue Anderson says, this is a difficult time, and we just ask people to stay vigilant and maintain social distancing, use masks, and, you know, get the vaccine when it's available. And we are making the vaccine available as we do our flu shots as well, so we're encouraging employees to have them. We're able... They're covered through our insurance and costs, and we're excited that people are getting vaccinated and hopefully being able to start turning the corner on this pandemic.
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
Sure.
Because we've gotten, and I know all of us have gotten a lot of information in regards... This is all voluntary. It's not mandatory that anyone take the vaccination throughout the city, is that correct?
Yeah, we're not mandating it. I think as Sue, as Marion said, you see, and we're seeing that too, there's some levels of our employees that are very eager to get this. The folks are really out on the front line and recognize the risk. Others, you know, think they want to take, get the vaccine a little later, that's okay. We're making it available for our employees as they want it. If people aren't getting the vaccine, if our employees aren't getting the vaccine, then we have additional safety measures and mitigation measures such as masking that would have to be in place just to assure that our workforce does stay safe, but we're not forcing that upon people.
Okay, and then the county government center is the Centeno Center, is that where they're doing...
Yes.
Okay, the Centeno Building.
Yeah, I believe they're doing it in the Board of Supervisor hearing room, so they've set that up as a vaccine spot. But, yeah, that's just the first one to try to get the ball rolling. They plan to... There is a state, or maybe it's a federal partnership with CBS and Walgreens to have them be able to provide the assistance. And obviously, the personnel trained on giving vaccines is one of the limitations, as well as the space, the locations, and so we're trying to help with the locations to make sure that those are available and that they have the freezers and the access and the parking that people are going to need.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form. And Madam Mayor, there are a number of attendees, however, I do believe most of them may want to speak on item 5C relating to sidewalk vendors. If any of the Zoom attendees are present and wish to speak on anything else that is not related to sidewalk vendors, could you please raise your hand, and we can call on you for public comment? Okay, so far, Madam Mayor, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number one?
Item number three.
I mean, oh, three.
That's okay. Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendars are approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have anything they need to pull from the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from 3B for the minute since I was not here. And then also, I just have a comment to make on 3E.
3E. Okay. Yes, could you read...
3B are the minutes of the regular meeting for the city council of December 15th, and I'm sorry, 3E, you said?
Yes, 3E, yes.
3E is adopt a resolution to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, SB CAG, for reimbursement of Measure A North County Subregion Program Funding for Highway 101 and 135 interchange projects.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, while I agree completely with the cooperated agreement with SB CAG, and I realize that there is a funding issue in regards to this, but we need to stay on top of it and try to push it as fast as we can. They're talking about 2030 to get this project done, and in nine years, Santa Maria is just going to grow and grow and grow, and so it's very imperative that we try to push a closer date to this. Not only that, is that it will also alleviate some, a lot of traffic off of Main Street by allowing another avenue to get to Pioneer High School and the hospital and other entities. So if we can just all keep that in mind to push this project forward and ask for, you know, a closer date other than nine years, that's the only comment I just wanted to make.
And I was going to comment on this also because of the Measure A investment plan, which included the $10 million to be allocated for this interchange, and then this comes to the subregional and then it goes to SB CAG, but it was very important that this be done as soon as possible, but they put all the monies into the 101 and HV, and then we had lawsuits, which...
Well, you know what? And that was so frustrating because...
It was frustrating.
Because a lot of the residents didn't want it, and all it did was delay the projects to where, when you did do it, the cost was just outrageous, and we could have done our part first.
I think this is something that should have been, what, done 30 years ago?
Oh, my gosh, absolutely.
And it got stopped for political reasons, so, and here we are, paying, what, 10 times more, would you say, Mr. Stillwell? Because I know that you were with the county at the time, so, okay.
So with that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to adopt the consent calendar, leaving out item 3B, which I will...
Okay.
I will vote, I will abstain from that.
Hey, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3B. And do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 3B.
Second.
And I have a motion and a second for 3B. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Abstain.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
That would be item 4A. Yes, city council will consider a resolution over ruling objections to the abatement of weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt on an additional parcel added to the weed abatement program pursuant to Title V, Chapter 8 of the Santa Maria municipal code.
And the staff report is to be made by Ms. Joy Castain from Code Compliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you this evening. On March 17th, 2020, almost a year ago, staff presented and city council adopted by resolution 2020-19, the approval of the weed abatement program. The resolution declared that public and unimproved private lots with overgrown weeds, refuse, rubbish constituted a public nuisance, potentially creating health and safety and fire hazards. Throughout the weed abatement program, staff works diligently to contact property owners via phone and mail, requesting that properties and parcels be properly maintained. Property owners who do not perform their own abatement on their property are charged for the service by the city. In 2020, we had a very successful year, and only one parcel required city assistance for the cleanup. Unfortunately, through various complaints, to include one that we received today, one parcel was located with overgrown weeds, graffiti, trash, and debris that was not part of the parcel submitted to you in March. December 1st, 2020, city council adopted resolution 2020-121. The resolution added this additional parcel to the weed abatement program, which wasn't included in the prior resolution. This single parcel is shown in your Exhibit A as line number 168. All other parcels have been cleared for 2020. Resolution 2021, which was set for today as the date that you'll hear the objections regarding the requirements to destroy weeds and remove the trash, is just for this particular parcel. Staff is recommending city council adopt the resolution over ruling the objection so that we can clean up this one additional parcel.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Ms. Waterfield?
No.
Any questions?
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to do... Oh, no.
One minute. Do we have a request to speak or written correspondence?
Are we opening the public hearing at this time?
Yes, we are.
With any members of the public who are in attendance, this is the public comment portion of the public hearing. If you wish to speak on the weed abatement program and lodge a protest on this item, please raise your hand, and we will contact you to make a comment. Madam Mayor, we have... Oh, sorry, we have one who has raised their hand.
Okay.
That would be Beth Sweetwater. I will give her the mic.
Okay.
You are unmuted, Ms. Sweetwater. Can you hear us? Maybe speak just a little louder into the microphone. Barely. Go ahead.
I can barely hear you because the audio seems to have a problem.
No, ma'am, can you speak right into your microphone?
I'm trying to do that. So I didn't have a problem last month, so I just don't... When I first... You were very, very soft when you first started, and it was really difficult. So can you hear me now?
We could barely hear you, but go ahead and see if we can record your comment.
Okay. I guess my question had to do with the food, the food vendors?
Okay, that would be item 5C, and we'll be coming to that item. This is for public comment on the weed abatement public hearing, which is a separate item. Is that... They're asking if that is an empty lot? Yes, that is an empty lot. Is the weed abatement using pesticides, is the question?
No, we use manual labor equipped.
No, according to our city attorney, manual labor is used to clear it. Right. Okay? Okay. Maybe speak just a little louder into the microphone. Barely. Go ahead.
I can barely hear you because the audio seems to have a problem.
No, ma'am, can you speak right into your microphone?
I'm trying to do that. So, I didn't have a problem last month, so I just don't, when I first, you were very, very soft when you first started, and it was really difficult. So, can you hear me now?
We could barely hear you, but go ahead and see if we can record your comment.
Okay. I guess my question had to do with the food, the food vendors?
Okay, that would be Item 5C, and we'll be coming to that item. This is for public comment on the weed abatement public hearing, which is a separate item.
Is that, they're asking if that is an empty lot? Yes, that is an empty lot.
Is the weed abatement using pesticides, is the question?
No, we use manual labor equipped.
No, according to our city attorney, manual labor is used to clear it. Okay, we'll go ahead and put your hand down for now, and then if you're interested in speaking on Item 5C, which is regarding sidewalk vendors, we'll come back to you then. Okay, thank you.
Are there any written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no written correspondence, and it doesn't appear anyone else wishes to speak.
Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for any further discussion or motion.
No discussion. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution over ruling objectives to the abatement of weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt on the additional parcel added to the weed abatement program pursuant to Title V, Chapter 8 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, okay. So, that's a resolution to confirm the weed abatement costs for one additional parcel. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will entertain nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem for a one-year term. This is Item 5A.
Staff report is made by manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As the staff report reads, in part, historically, the assignment of Mayor Pro Tem has been periodically rotated amongst council members on an annual basis each calendar year. There are no formal rules, policies, or procedures as to how the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem is made. The municipal code is also silent in this regard. The duties of the Mayor Pro Tem include acting on behalf of the mayor in the mayor's absence. The Mayor Pro Tem presides at city council meetings when the mayor is absent. The Mayor Pro Tem also fills in for the mayor at various community functions and meetings when the mayor is unavailable. And on December 17th, 2019, Madam Mayor Patino nominated the city council ratified Councilmember Cordero to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the calendar year 2020. It's now time for the mayor to consider nominating a council member to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for calendar year 2021. And after Madam Mayor Patino makes her nomination, a majority of the city council will be required to ratify the appointment. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So, I would like to nominate Councilmember Waterfield as Mayor Pro Tem for the 2021 calendar year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
The next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
That would be Item 5B.
5B.
And the City Council will confirm appointments to outside boards, committees, requiring city council representation.
Thank you. Staff report is to be made by Mr. Stillwell.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, there are 10 outside boards or commissions that the city council members serve on, and every other year, the council selects members from the council to represent the city on those commissions. The 10 include the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District, the Breeze Policy Working and Technical Committees, the Central Coast Water Authority, Community Action Commission, Downtown Revitalization Committee, Home for Good, Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, the Santa Maria Airport Council Informational Quarterly Meeting, the Schools' Quarterly Roundtable, and the Central Coast Community Energy. So, staff has confirmed with the mayor about council assignments. They are included in the staff report. The recommendations are for the Air Pollution Control District to remain, Mayor Patino and the alternate of Councilmember Waterfield. The Breeze Policy Committee, which is dormant based, and I think I've mentioned to council members ahead of this meeting that with the adoption that the council has of the MOU in 2020 for regional bus services, the Breeze Policy Committee will be dormant. We'll be able to eliminate that at a future date, but right now, it has been Councilmember Cordero. We don't recommend any change at this time. The Central Coast Water Authority would remain Councilmember Waterfield, and the alternate would be Utilities Director Shad Springer. Community Action Commission would remain Councilmember Cordero. Downtown Revitalization Committee would remain Councilmembers Soto and Waterfield. Home for Good would remain Councilmembers Waterfield and Cordero. The Santa Barbara County Association of Governments would remain, Madam Mayor Patino, with the alternate of Councilmember Waterfield. The airport quarterly meetings would be Councilmembers Soto and Escobedo. It was Soto and Moats. And the Schools' Quarterly Roundtable would, instead of last year, last two years, it was Madam Mayor Patino and Councilmember Moats, would be Madam Mayor Patino and Councilmember Escobedo. And then the Central Coast Community Energy would remain Madam Mayor Patino. And that concludes my report. These are included in the MADDY book, and they would stay in place until changed by the city council, either at the upcoming agenda item or in the interim as events dictate.
Thank you very much. So, I'd like to, I'd like to bring this forward for a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation.
I move.
Second.
Do I hear, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes, that would be Item 5C. The City Council will consider ordinance regulating sidewalk vendors in the city.
And the staff report is to be made by city attorney, Mr. Watson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Council, staff is recommending that the council introduce an ordinance for first reading and continue this future meeting as a second reading adoption.
A new ordinance, which would add Chapter 4-20 to Title IV of the municipal code, which specifically regulates sidewalk vendors. By way of background, in the year 2018, the state legislature adopted the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, which made changes to the government code to allow for entrepreneurial sidewalk vending, primarily within expectation to bring additional economic resources to smaller communities. Since that time, the city of Santa Maria has seen an increase in sidewalk vending throughout the community. Much of the vending, once code enforcement did actually chat with the vendors, was taking place by individuals who were either, were being brought in from out of the area specifically to vend in the community, and then were picked up and returned to their place of residence. The primary areas that we found folks coming from were Los Angeles and Bakersfield, although we did find individuals from other jurisdictional areas. As a result of that, the city attorney's office and Code Compliance, code enforcement, had numerous discussions and reviewed sidewalk vending ordinances from all over the state of California. What you have in front of you is a, what we believe is the best compromise that continues the Santa Maria way, which balances the needs of the public health and community, balances the needs of our brick and mortar businesses, and balances the needs of those who truly are Santa Marians who want to vend to the local community. That is not something that in any way are we discouraging or trying to eliminate. Rather, we are trying to regulate what has been an unregulated business model with expectation that we will protect local businesses and local individuals, because as an individual who was on KSBY last night said, they will obtain licensures to be here. If they're local, they will obtain licensures to be here. What we are really trying to impact with this ordinance is those who are being brought in from out of town, for whom we do not know if they are individuals that are employees, individuals that are their own entrepreneurs, or individuals under some sort of coercion who are being brought to our community, whether they're old, young, or quite young children, which we are finding in the community. By way of anecdotal information, I'd like to bring forward Code Enforcement Supervisor Castain, who has some more information, because we have done a lot of contact with these folks over the last six to eight months, and she can provide some context.
Thank you. Ms. Castain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Our office, along with the police department and the city rangers, have gone out on a very regular basis. We've spoken with, we've gone out due to complaints that are being received from the public to us that are taking us out to these locations. At this point, most of the individuals, we always do education first, so we always talk to folks, see how they're doing, what's going on, try to give them education if they need to get business licenses, what some of the processes would be. And at this point in time, we haven't found any of the individuals that we have gone out on complaints for that were local. They have all been from outside sources, Bakersfield, LA, this kind of thing. And it's been, it's been a little hard just to see all of that when we're also receiving complaints from our local community for asking for help to try to keep them afloat because of the COVID situation that's going on. Additionally, we have seen situations where some of the vendors are setting up, blocking sidewalks. So, we have ADA concerns, or they're right next to freeway entrances, and they're starting to kind of block traffic and this kind of thing, which becomes very, very unsafe for not only the vendors that are out there, but the public that's trying to just get home from work. And so, yeah, any kind of questions, gladly help answer those.
I'd like to start also with a couple of things that this does not do. We are not in any way intending to impact food trucks. Food trucks are regulated through an ordinance we already have on the books, and are very heavily regulated by the Santa Barbara County Health Department. So, that is not contained here. This is for vending from push carts or from a street-side stationary or mobile location. Secondly, what we are, what we have endeavored to do is give a path to legalism. So, there is a path to getting a license. It simply requires identification, some insurance, which we would require of most of our businesses, a business license, which we would require from all of our businesses, a, if you're reselling items, a reseller license, which would be required by the state of California. None of these things are anything new that the city is regulating that would not be otherwise regulated for any other business in our community. What is being required is to be able to identify who these folks are because they are itinerant. So, we are asking that the city conduct a live scan of these individuals, primarily because if you do not have a fixed location, it's much more difficult for us as regulators to come and communicate with you, because we don't have a fixed location to identify where you are. So, that's one of the reasons we've asked for specific identification elements in this requirement, so that we can track down if there's a problem, particularly if there was a food outbreak, if there was an E. coli outbreak because of a food product. We want to immediately be able to track down that vendor, which we can do in a brick and mortar, but is a lot more difficult with an itinerant vendor. So, that is contained in here. And we believe that this is, again, a balance between the necessity for the public safety and the rights of the individuals to come and obtain licensing. We have not asked for a fee for the license, although at some point, that may be, but as part of this pilot rollout, we have not asked the council to identify a fee. We simply want to get folks used to the concept of, these are regulated industries, no different than any other purchase or sale. Car dealers have licenses, flower vendors have licenses, you know, itinerant toy sellers should have licenses as well. It's a fair balance. It's well within the state statute that does allow local regulations that are reasonably calculated to protect the public safety, and that's what we've done. Both Supervisor Castain and myself are happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council?
Very well explained.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What other city requires a background check and liability insurance for street vending?
The city of Arroyo Grande also requires that. Some of the requirements with liability insurance and those kinds of things, I would say that was kind of more standard for what I saw everywhere, so I don't think I can give you something specific, but I can tell you that AG does have all of that as well.
Do other cities, I mean, do other businesses in the city of Santa Maria, are they required to have liability insurance and to have the city of Santa Maria listed as an, as a, would it be insurer?
We've not required them to list us as an additional insurer, rather just simply have insurance. And yes, generally, businesses have insurance, although that's not always a requirement. In some cases, it is.
How many workshops have we, have we done any workshops, any community outreach, to educate the public or our street food vendors on this ordinance? And educate them on the process that they will have to take to get a license here?
We have not, although that's part of the rollout, because there's no reason to issue a workshop if the council rejected the ordinance. If the council enacts the ordinance, within that 30-day window, we anticipate going out to all of the vendors that we regularly come in contact with and those we don't, provide them actually with a checklist of the items that they will need to have in order to obtain their licensure. But we did not do a number of workshops, because again, unless the council, this is the first instance the council has with this, if the council chooses not to move forward with it, then that would be a lot of extra effort. However, I can tell you that we have had a lot of communication. As Supervisor Castain said, we regularly communicate with these folks, because we're not citing them. We're actually asking them, where are you from? What are you doing here? You know, who are you? And are you, are you here locally? I mean, that's part of the education process. In some of that, we've acknowledged that we don't have an ordinance that covers that, and rather, we would like their cooperation to make sure that we check the public safety and make sure that they're not blocking sidewalks. That's been the education we've done specifically with the vendors to date.
Yeah, and the only reason why I ask is because oftentimes, when we're getting ready to pass, you know, any type of additional fees that are going to be imposed onto developers, there is a long and thorough process where the city staff are having ample conversations with them and making sure that we come into some sort of compromise that, and that we get buy-in from the developers or other business community members. And so, that was my question, if we had done something similar with street vendors, that's why I asked that question, just to make sure that, because I know that other cities have done that, where before even passing an ordinance, they do have community workshops, and they do ask for community input, and particularly, input from the folks who are going to be most impacted by the ordinances that the city's going to pass.
If that's the council's pleasure, we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Questions from the council?
Oh, go ahead.
Good. Mr. Escobedo?
Question. I was looking at the proposal, and just want to make sure that there's no social security number required in this, correct?
That is correct. We have not asked for social security or tax ID numbers, but rather, the standard that we would ask for in our business license applications.
So, there's no, there wouldn't be a limitation to undocumented?
We have no intention of in any way impacting undocumented or folks who just don't otherwise have tax ID numbers.
Awesome. Awesome. One of the, one of the things I would like to, what I've seen in this proposal is that it actually is not, you know, it's not targeting the small businesses or the people that are trying to make a living, but kind of put an order of this, what's going on. I had the opportunity of talking with one of the flowers vendors on the intersection Broadway and Donovan, Sandra, and she came from Bakersfield. And she was not working for herself. It was, she was working for somebody in Bakersfield. So one of my concerns is the rights of the workers or the employee. It's who is the person behind, behind the people that is there working in really bad conditions? So that's one of my biggest concerns. It's the rights of the people that it's, maybe somebody is taking advantage of the need of others. So I was really concerned also to see younger people, underage. You can tell, there's underage people working, kids working on the intersection. So I think that we have to be pretty mindful and that has to attract our attention and be pretty diligent on that.
Okay. Any other questions of Ms. Castain or Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My last question is, I can, I know that it was written in the ordinance and it was somewhat vague to me as to who would be in charge of the permit or the licensing permitting process for this. It seemed like it was going to be up to the Director of Community Development, right?
Well, the way this works is very similar to our business license structure. So the application goes into Finance, where they review a number of the items. If there is a stationary prospect, then it goes to the Community Development to make sure that that, that stationary area protects the rights of the ADA and those sorts of things. So there's, it's a hybrid, but it really is, like you said earlier about land use, it's a multi-departmental review, but the primary department that's responsible is Finance, which is no different than our business licenses.
Thank you. And my last question is, I know that right now, you know, we've seen the city be impacted financially because of, you know, the pandemic or just pension costs. And so, given the fact that we have, that we're trying to be more fiscally, a little bit more fiscally conservative here in the city, how would this impact that? Do our staff have the capacity to take on an additional load?
We've been in communication with the departments. We believe that that would be true. When you look at, you know, 1,800 or so business licenses on an annual basis, 100 or so more would not be a tremendous impact.
Thank you.
And one question. You say that at the beginning would be no fee, and then we would transition to our fee?
We have not, at this point, recommended a fee, partially because we don't know how many actual licenses. Usually, we'll make a determination later, a year or two later, once we have some tracking of how many licenses we would divide that time up by. But at this point, we have no inclination and indication of what that would be. So we're not making a recommendation to do that at this point. What we would like to do is get the cooperation of the, of the community vendors, and then we can make a determination later. So just start by simply getting the folks to come in and talk to us.
And I would like to make a recommendation in this process that we share information in English and Spanish at least, so we can be, you know, pretty open and people know exactly what this might look like.
We will make sure that there is a translation for any vendor who comes in because generally, we may get a Mesteco individual. So we will make sure that they're dealt with in their own language because that's important to us as well.
Ms. Castan, I'd like to ask a question. So when you educate them or speak to them, none of them have been cited?
I do believe that we probably have issued one citation that was for them because they were actually not set up on the sidewalk. They were set up on private property, which kind of has a, you're not then a sidewalk vendor. Now you're set up as basically an illegal, unpermitted vendor. And so in that case, they were cited.
Okay. My understanding, it was location on, I think on East Main, that they were told to move? And then like 15 minutes, half an hour later, they're back?
Yeah.
Told to move again, and then they come back?
Some of the challenges have been that some of the vendors don't have any form of ID. And so we've been able to communicate with everyone and they give us our, where they're coming from and what's going on and how long they're going to be there, or when the ride will come pick them up. However, a lot of times, they don't have any ID on them. And so, again, with this ordinance, what we tried to do is make it streamlined and the same as it would through a business license process. So it's not going to a bunch of different places. It was made easy, the same thing as what anyone else would have to go through. And then also then, because of some of the information we would be able to obtain, we could at least then notify the person's boss or, you know, whoever had brought them here so that that way then we can provide that education and get that to them that way.
They don't tell you who their boss is?
It's rare. Sometimes they do. We had a really sweet couple brothers. They were set up in different locations and they kind of told us how their day is typically. What was, what we were informed was that they start their day at about 3:00 AM. They are taken to a warehouse. They do some things with putting together the flowers, this kind of thing. They are then brought up to this area. They don't typically get a break. They don't typically have lunch. They weren't given any form of potties or anything like that. And then they are picked up at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night.
Okay, so then, Mr. Watson? Is this a good description of human trafficking?
I would say it is certainly a violation of employee rights, making an assumption it's an employee. I can't verify human trafficking because that implies some more police elements, but I would say that it is horrific working conditions, which, again, one of the reasons that we're asking for regulation is not only to hold the individuals, but to hold the person who is making the money responsible for the activities that they are. Because we do have photographs of small children that ordinarily in a family business, children can work in a family business. However, I cannot verify that a 10- to 12-year-old is working in a family business when he or she is standing in a corner selling flowers. I, I'm personally affronted by folks who say that we're trying to eliminate small business opportunity. What I'm trying to do in my own mind is protect the rights of the vendors as well as the rights of the community. So we strongly urge the council to move forward with this. That's the best I can tell you. Because, because we do believe that there are elements of criminality that may be involved in this.
Absolutely. I have a question.
And we can't verify it.
Madam Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Watson?
Has there been any evidence in any parts with the people coming from out of town or keeping those hours, any evidence of defecating around the location? Because they have to relieve themselves.
I haven't, we haven't been real active at looking at some of that. Some of the nice vendors, what they've done is ask some of the businesses if they can use their restrooms. Or in one case, where someone was operating outside of someone's home, they actually asked for permission to go in and use their restroom there.
Thank you.
So also, I would like to share, I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with a business owner. He sells flowers. And he was complaining that right in front of his business, there was a street vendor selling flowers, the same good, cheaper. And he was really concerned that, you know, everything was going on pretty bad with him, with the pandemic, and now he had competition with, they cannot compete because it's, you know, basically, they stop, they take the money, they don't even get up the car, and they leave. But he has establishment and he has everything. So he was really concerned about his future right now with the pandemic. So it's a lot of stuff that goes along with this.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clark, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak? I'm sure we do.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Staff received seven written communications. At this time, before I move forward with those, those who wish to provide oral communications to the council on this item, 5C relating to sidewalk vendors, please be sure to raise your hand or prepare to raise your hand that you would like to speak and we'll select you in the order on which you have raised your hand. I apologize, Madam Mayor. Staff received seven written communications in opposition to the city's proposed ordinance for sidewalk vendors. These communications were received after the agenda was published, were provided to the City Council via email today, and copies were provided on the diocese evening. These written communications were submitted by Rebecca Garcia, representing cause, Maria Garcia, Rosie Ojeda, Patricia Alta Moreno, please forgive me for messing up the name, Yesenia Paredo Gercelda Vega Martinez and Paz Valencia. Each generally indicating sidewalk vending provides an important economic opportunity for low-income and immigrant communities. And the ordinance would be harmful towards the street vendor's livelihood by limiting where they conduct business and discriminatory in nature because it targets the vulnerable working class in the middle of a pandemic. Passing the ordinance would only add to the struggles the low-income families are dealing with, dealing with to work and make ends meet during these difficult times. A suggestion was also made to collaborate with street vendors on the policy versus leaving them out of the conversation that impacts them on their livelihood. References were also made to the California Regulations on Safe Sidewalk Vending Act that protects street vendors and claims the proposed ordinance would set unnecessary unwarranted regulations on the street vendors who provide an important economic development opportunity for low-income and immigrant communities. Summarize.
Thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, it looks like we have four hands raised currently in our list of Zoom people. The first one would be Janet Rios. I will unmute you and give you an opportunity to speak to the council.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, City Council members, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. As stated, my name is Janet Rios. I am a resident of Santa Maria, born and raised. And I am, you know, concerned. I'm here to express how worried I am and opposed to the ordinance that is seeking to regulate street vending. I believe that by passing this bill, you will make it harder on our local street vendors to do business in our city, those who do live here, those who are just trying to make a living. And due to the bureaucracies and the long processes that sometimes these permit requests may take and the time it may take to receive approval, it will only prevent our local vendors from making a living and participating in this local economy. And I think it's discriminatory and unfair because it, you know, even though it was stated that it doesn't target our local immigrant entrepreneurs, it does. By requiring a live scan background check, you are required to provide a social security number, and that costs money. And without that social security number, you can't do that background check. So that alone is a barrier. And so I urge you to consider not passing it. This does not offer relief. It adds more stress, and folks are just trying to survive, especially during a pandemic where people already, you know, in this area are already struggling. And we don't need more of that. And I just, you know, ask that you center the needs of the communities and you include them in the conversation as you move forward. I know people have been spoken to, but why aren't they here today to speak on their experience? I find that unfair. And so I just ask that you, you know, consider that it limits access and promotes discriminatory practices. And I hope you consider not passing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. Madam Mayor, our next speaker that we have in line is Mr. Glenn Morris. Mr. Morris, I've unmuted you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item. The Chamber of Commerce at its core supports entrepreneurship and the opportunity for individuals to create wealth in their own home and in their own community. At the same time, we support local businesses, individuals who have built businesses by following the rules and the processes expected of them by the community. I think that, you know, the conditions, the working conditions that have been described to you by your staff today would result in significant fines and potentially criminal charges if they were, if they were found in an existing brick-and-mortar business or one of our agricultural businesses in our community. The standards that are asked for and demanded by the community of all businesses should be required and expected of all businesses. We believe that the ordinance, as you, as been presented to you by staff, is fair. It asks only those same steps and requirements that every other existing business is asked to comply. If anything, it gives them a little bit of a light up because a traditional brick-and-mortar business doesn't have their business license be waived. And so I think that if anything, staff is going above and beyond at this point. I would point out that our Economic Development Team at the Chamber is available and willing to help any individual who wants to start a business to help them understand the process, complete the paperwork, and walk them through the process. That is available at no charge to any member of the community. And we welcome any legitimate business idea and potential owner in our community to come and seek that help. We strongly support this ordinance today and encourage you to pass it and protect our existing local businesses who have made the investment, who have support and hire our local neighbors and family members and who are a part of our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris. Next, we have Oscar Velasco Vargas, who will be followed by Beth Sweetwater. Mr. Velasco Vargas, are you able to speak? Can you hear us?
Yes. Yes, I can hear you. Hello, my name is Oscar Velasco. I am a Santa Maria native, and I'm with the Central Coast Coalition for Undocumented Student Success. I am here to make a public comment against the Santa Maria Sidewalk Vendor Ordinance. This ordinance is too harsh on our local vendors and does not highlight the day-to-day struggles that they already face without adding more burdens to the vendor's way of life and their ways to make a living. This ordinance requires vendors to get fingerprinted, pass background checks through the Santa Maria Police Department, and prohibits vendors from operating within 500 feet of any school grounds, public or private. Background checks do require a social security number, especially if it's being done by a local police department. I'm against this ordinance because it places more restrictions and limits the number of workers, creating opportunities for themselves to survive economically in the middle of a pandemic and will make sidewalk vendors more vulnerable to harassment from city officials and local law enforcement. Street vending has become a lifeline to our undocumented immigrant community right now in this midst of a global pandemic. Across the state and city, we're seeing workers who are, who were in unstable employment prior to pandemic turn to side vending to provide for themselves and their families. This ordinance would negatively impact our most marginalized and vulnerable businesses. If this ordinance is passed, you won't just be hurting our local street vendors. You'll be hurting the local supply chain and their suppliers that support our street vendors and families. I urge the Santa Maria City Council to not move forward and go through with this ordinance. ordinance. I urge the Santa Maria City Council to reject this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Velasco. We will have Beth Sweetwater, followed by Nick Razzo. Ms. Sweetwater, can you give us a try one more time?
Okay.
Oh, yay, perfect.
Well, I changed for my phone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so I'd like to, I've been listening really carefully, and I have to say that the presentation of your side seemed to be very considerate, but, and reasonable, and took in some factors that maybe people weren't thinking about. But the thing that's so, that's bothersome in the general sense is that there seems, there's no transparency. You just bring it up, and now you have a proposal, and then you do it, and it's yes or no. If you don't bring people into the process before to discuss what you're going to do and allow their input, then your credibility is not there, and people will not follow it, they'll find ways around it, and then they'll be caught up in this whole bureaucratic thing. Transparency is the most, most important thing, and I just don't see that. And I'm referring, maybe I missed something, but when you appointed the police chief, I thought there was, every comment was, let's have the community involved. Well, I don't, I think you just appointed somebody. So if you want faith in what you do, you have to be transparent. There's just no other way in the world that we live. And so I would suggest that you table this for the time being and make sure that you have a discussion, even at the meeting, to invite the people who are vendors and get some input, and maybe they could have some suggestions on what's good, what's bad, and you can then have a proposal that is, that you can state that you've already spoken to people. I mean, this happens in schools all over the country where they make a decision and they don't allow the people of the community in the process. And you're just asking for a boatload of problems of, of people circumventing and doing all kinds of things. And then the other thing is, although I do agree with you that there could be a lot of illegal activity going on, which there is, you know, you have to know that people travel, you know, the, the people who harvest, they go all over. And so if you don't include those people to have some understanding why they might come here, then, like I said, you're still putting up roadblocks and you're making your credibility very narrow. So I would appreciate if you considered the act of always doing the process before you enact something, because then people feel vested in it and they feel like you've reached out rather than just giving up to, well, we decided to do this and we're doing it, you know? And then people talk, and then they're not listened to anyways, which creates just the kind of resentment I don't think you want, really want to have going forward. So that's why at this moment, I'm not for it nor against it, but I think it should just wait until you can have some community input. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, just as we've been speaking, we have had three additional people come on Zoom and have raised their hand. So our next speaker is Rick Razzo, followed by Lizbeth Lopez. And, hmm, Mr. Rick looks for Nick, but it's gone. Okay, so we'll go to Liz. And Liz, can you hear us?
Yes, can you get through?
Uh, please, please. Maybe you can speak just a little bit louder. I think we got you now.
Okay. Can I start now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good morning. Please count on the numbers, we're just Santa Maria residents listening in today. My name is Lizbeth Lopez, and I'm a young adult youth with COTHS. I'm here today to ask you to protect street vendors from the city attorney's recommended ordinance to place unnecessary regulations on our community. As noted in the recommendation California passed the city sidewalk vending act to protect street vendors from ongoing city regulations and declare that, that sidewalk vending is a threat to the community.
Ms. Lopez, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Lopez, can I interrupt you and ask you to try to speak just a little bit louder into your microphone?
Okay.
Go ahead.
If the recommended ordinance is passed in Santa Maria, it would be harmful towards street vendors livelihood by limiting where they conduct business and discriminatory in nature because it targets our vulnerable working class in the middle of a pandemic. Santa Maria's already struggled to get by, and a new ordinance would create additional hurdles to these small businesses. Regulating street vendors' regular routes would deeply hurt businesses' relationship to their loyal customers. Street vendors have built up reputations and popularity in our community. Whether we are at a soccer game, community event, parade, or simply on our way to pick up our children from school, we trust that our paradero, elopero, and others are always there for us. Street vendors do not have the money or time to deal with, sorry, with the needs of low-income and immigrant communities, requiring whether permits fees and background scans create an unnecessary barrier between working class and the very jobs that sustain their families. Street vendors depend on their daily earnings to get by and the money work in this area because they have the options to make a liable wage. Whether they be older folks who might not be able to work in other jobs, undocumented immigrants who depend on this work to survive, or people who can't afford the qualified education for another workforce, they're all valuable, valuable people in our community that deserve our protection. Our street vendors work hard to bring joy into our communities with food. We must work equally as hard to protect their jobs, and we, thank you.
Madam Mayor, at this time, we have four remaining hands up to speak. Do we close that out, or if we get others on board? Just move forward.
Were, um, were they there when, when we started?
No, the four have been on for a while, but I'm just asking if we have any more that come on. Do we want to add any more? No?
No.
Okay. Our next speaker then would be Johnny Magania, followed by Yesenia Palito. Mr. Magania, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect, thank you.
Hello, my name is Johnny Magania, resident here of Angeles, in V C S P and graduate from Davis and Community Development. My first, my concern is that there was, at the beginning, the gentleman started to mention about community, right? And my, my response to that is that community is not a crime, right? So I felt that there was a little bit of that boogeyman kind of syndrome, right? And where like, oh, they're coming from afar. We in Santa Maria go to Santa Barbara through the Clean Air Bus to work out there. So community is not that, you know, I mean, I, 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 I get, I, I don't, I just, it irks me, right? Then the second thing is that we're in a pandemic, right? And I think that there's more important issues for us, such as staying alive, than, you know, this documentation, right? And getting documents to help. I think that we have different priorities, and this law would only, you know, put an additional burden on us and another worry, issue that worries us, you know? And then also too, the last final thing is that there was only one, like, one, one conversation, right? The individual that is coming from out of town. Many of these street vendors are from Santa Maria, right? But I didn't get to hear that, those narratives. So this conversation within itself is very just one-sided about the individual coming and this kind of like, you know, looking, you know, trafficking kind of conversation that Alex Kudino touched upon, right? So, and then the final thing is that the, the issue about, the issue about, you know, documentation, right? So there was a, you know, about, you know, live scan. And I think that there, when, when we're referring to live scan, I think that, you know, not that many people are gonna, you know, let's be honest with ourselves, like, it's an issue that not that many people are gonna be able to deal with because not everybody's undocumented. But these undocumented individuals are part of our community, right? And it's our responsibility and city council and city mayor to also represent those people who live here, regardless of their status, right? So I think that there's this conversation of like, you know, that there's, they're on the other side of the spectrum. They're part, they're Santa Marias to me, and they're Santa Marias to everybody, to a great percentage of the city of Santa Maria. So I think that we also have to defend them, right? Because when you were sworn in, many of you were sworn in and was to defend these, you know, to, to represent these communities and these constituencies, right? Well, they're part of it, right? So make sure that they're part of the spectrum and that we make an effort not to, you know, to, to continue and exacerbate the fear that they live in, right? And then, you know, there was also, you know, some of this food that is sold, such as ice cream, is packaged, right? So there's this kind of conversation, well, you don't know what you're selling, right? But in our reality, some of this, like, it's just caviar and wrapper, right? And like vending is one of the oldest, you know, one of the oldest, you know, profession of life. And, you know, the type of money that they make isn't, isn't that comparable to what big businesses are making. And there's this, there's this assumption that, you know, individuals with businesses, you know, are somehow frightened of, you know, forty coins being sold per day, right? And then there's this like, oh, it's very unfair, like, forty, forty. If people want to complain about an individual making thirty dollars per day selling, you know, some more.
Mr. Magania, I apologize, but your three minutes is up and then some. So we thank you for your comments, and we're gonna move on to Ms. Yesenia Palito.
Very much.
Ms. Palito, if you're available, you're up to talk.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think the previous speaker brought up a lot of great points, especially regarding the fact that we are not in fact hearing the perspective of migrant workers in this community. We are given the narrative that all of these workers are simply coming from out of town, and that's, we know that's not the case. We've been, most of us have been here all of our lives, and we know for a fact that these are people in our community, working for our community and working for their families. But I think one point that has not been brought up often enough is the hypocrisy of the city attorney. He has frequently stated that this is for employee safety, but the city has not done enough to protect its migrant workers, especially when we look at H-2A workers. If we're gonna talk about employee rights, we need to realize that the city is being hypocritical in its treatment of these workers because they are not offering any protection to H-2A workers. If they were really concerned, they would be monitoring farmers there and monitoring theirs, the, how they're maintaining their fields, whether they are providing the adequate PPE. Most of the cases of COVID are in North County, and specifically, they are affecting local farm workers. And I think it's pretty evident that the city is picking and choosing who it wants to protect here. It's protecting quote-unquote "small businesses" that fit within the wealthy narrative that they want to promote instead of targeting the people who are really causing problems in this community, instead of helping these workers. They are just targeting and making it harder for them to find work in this community. I also think it's incredibly hypocritical that you are requiring, or this ordinance would require a, not only a live scan, but the additional cost of liability insurance, which someone earlier said is not required by all small businesses. So why would we require that of these vendors instead of requiring it for everyone if the argument there is that they are further out in the city and they are around the community more? I just don't think that makes sense, especially when looking at our city budget. Why is forty-nine percent of our budget allocated towards the police instead of these communities that could help mitigate the cost of quote-unquote whatever damage is caused by vendors, which I don't think it's a lot. And if it is a lot, I think it's important that the city publish that data and make the reasons abundantly clear instead of telling us it's for the safety of the employee when we know it by the treatment of other Latino workers, if it's just not the case.
Ms. Palito, you have about thirty seconds, if you wouldn't mind wrapping up your comments.
Um, yeah, I think I'll cut it off there.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Angel Lopez, you're up if you are available to speak at this time. Oh, sorry, Mr.? Yes, I am, thank you.
Hello, good evening, I'm mayor and members of the council. My name is Anki Lopez, and I'm a proud product of Santa Maria. Today, I am here to urge the city council to really rethink the ordinance presented tonight. I urge the city council members to work with our street vendors and take a pro, small business stance. With the ongoing pandemic and the COVID, the lack of COVID-19 financial relief provided by our federal government, our businesses are struggling to survive and do not need additional regulations such as the live scan requirement. I agree with supporting our local businesses, but requiring live scans and liability insurance would make it extremely difficult for our, our small businesses to survive. I know the floor's spoken about may not be from Santa Maria, but the reality is of our street vendors are members of our community and have been serving our community for years. Like mentioned by Councilwoman Soro and a few members of the public, the city should do outreach to vendors and see if they're able to comply with the requirements that were required by the city. And if the thirty days presented by the ordinance is enough time to complete the permits required, I urge the city to continue collaborating with the street vendors to make sure that they comply with the city's rules, are included in these discussions, and make sure that no worker rights are being violated. I urge the city council not to pass this ordinance tonight. Thank you. I use my time.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Yesenia Baez. Are you available to speak at this time?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, you're up and ready to go.
All righty. Thank you, city council members, for this moment of speaking. I'll make it really brief. I just really want to echo what everyone has been saying. I believe it's very hurtful towards the street vendors, as well as very discriminatory against their work. Passing this recommendation, like I said, will hurt these people's lives by their day-by-day earnings. Whether they're from here or from baker's fields, they depend on this money to live. I also believe that the background scans do affect undocumented communities, and undocumented communities who live here depend on it more than anyone else. They literally, you know, their job really depends on this income to live. One last thing, you know, just allowing their voices to be heard, everyone who is the street vendors, I mean, their jobs are at stake here, not ours. So I just want the city council members to please remember one thing, that we are living in a pandemic, and passing this recommendation right now without an education is more harmful than ever to all our people, especially our street vendors. So please provide education and do not let, or I recommend you all to not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baez, and that was our final speaker, Madam Mayor. I will turn it back over to you.
I'll bring this back to the council for discussion and then a motion. So where do you want to start?
May I respond?
Yes, yes, Mr. Watson, please do respond.
I just feel it's important to clarify a couple of things that were brought up by the various speakers. First of all, I did identify with our police chief that the live scan that the police department uses, the records supervisor informs us that there, no social security number is necessary for a live scan. The cost for a live scan is fifteen dollars and sixteen cents, which would be, in essence, the only fee required for this regulatory license. Secondly, you know, I, I hear what the folks are saying about education, and that's very fair and appropriate. When we rolled out a new tobacco ordinance, we actually did not enforce for a number of months so that we'd have an opportunity to get people into compliance. And I certainly would pledge to do exactly the same thing in this circumstance. We are not here to bring the hammer down. We're here to, again, protect the employees, notwithstanding the individual who thinks that we're not protecting H-2A because I believe we are. But we're also here to protect the local community, the members of our community, the small businesses of our community, and the members of the public. And we are trying to balance that. We believe that this ordinance does that. If the issue is education, then my office and the Code Enforcement Division will be more than happy to try and get people in compliance because that's a Santa Maria way. That is how we have worked since I've gotten here. That's how Supervisor Chastain runs her division. And we are not out looking for fines and penalties. What we are out for is looking for compliance, and we want people to be safe. That's primary. If folks are from Santa Maria, they know us and we know them. If folks are from Santa Maria, they know us and we know them. This issue with respect to, uh, being from outside is, is one of the reasons that the pandemic has brought this to the surface is because we are seeing more people having to travel hundreds of miles to set up these sidewalk vending because they're not in their local communities. And so in essence, we are also protecting our local Santa Maria vendors if we start eliminating or regulating out of town vending. And so I think we're protecting Santa Maria, which is what my job is, is protect the residents of Santa Maria. And I believe this is a good balance to do so and I recommend passing.
Thank you. Did you have any comments you wanted to make, Ms. Casting?
No.
Okay. Okay, I'll bring the item back to the council for discussion. And do you want to start with Mr. Cordero or who wants to start?
I'll start, Madam Mayor, thank you. I, um, I, 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 I'm deeply moved by all of the support that the vendors have with, uh, with our community members. But I didn't hear anyone that commented, nor is it articulated in any of the writings, about the concern for the brick and mortar stores. Didn't, no one commented on that. These people, uh, that are, uh, paying whatever fee they pay, getting their license, having their insurance, uh, paying their taxes, et cetera, yet someone can come in and as, uh, as Councilmember Escobedo alluded to, that, uh, there was a riff on somebody's part because they were, had a, a vendor selling flowers, I believe he said, out in front of another flower, Spencer, and they were selling them a little bit cheaper. Um, I don't mind sharing with you that if I were going someplace and I saw a dozen roses here for thirty dollars and a dozen roses here for, uh, forty-five dollars, I'm probably gonna go home with the thirty dollar roses. I, I think that that's probably the heart of most people. And, uh, so, so there was, there's certainly no concern at all for the brick and mortar people. I'm, I'm also rather disturbed that it sounds like these people, some of the, some of the, they're calling them local vendors and I, I'm listening to our testimony here saying that many of them are coming from Southern California and the Bakersfield area and they're being, starting out like at three o'clock in the morning and they're being dropped off at these various places and there's no restroom facilities for them. I, I, I don't know about you, but I don't want any, my friends or family or anybody else being dropped off at some street corner that doesn't have any facilities for, uh, using the restroom or relaxing or resting or taking breaks or any of the other things that are covered by, um, by the, uh, the labor laws. I was impressed by the fact that, um, the city attorney has indicated that there are no fees and then he mentions that there's a fifteen dollar fee. I, I don't think that's an exorbitant amount of money to offset the cost of doing the, uh, the life scan. And, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't see the, um, the viciousness that's being, uh, alluded to by some people that this is, uh, an effort on the part of the city council, uh, particularly, but on the part of the city management, the bureaucracy of Santa Maria, that they're out to get people or, or get a certain demographic of the community. I, I, I just don't see that. This is a, an effort to, uh, move into a level of regulation. The, 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 the United States is a, is a, is a government of laws and regulations and we should comply with those laws and regulations. I, I'm, I'm really concerned that somewhere along the lines, and I'm looking for more information, if somebody has it, that, that, uh, that there's some abuse here going on by, by, by the agency itself. I, I just don't see it. So, um, unless someone can prove something like that, then I, I suggest that we consider moving ahead with this ordinance so that we can get past it and, and, and start to help to educate these people and bring them into line with what we, what we need to have done and, and regulate, uh, them and know who is in our community. Another thing I'd like to point out is part of doing business as a community, and I, I'm a little surprised that, uh, that we didn't hear that from the chamber, but part of the doing business is we want to encourage the business. But in doing that, we also want to encourage the money to stay here in Santa Maria. That's part of local business. We want to encourage the consumer to spend their fifteen, twenty, thirty, fifty dollars, whatever they're gonna spend, and that money stays here and then they in turn spend that money and they in turn spend that money. And if these people are, are picking this money up and taking it to Bakersfield or, or Los Angeles or any other community, um, I, I don't think that's good community business. So I, I'm, I'm not finding it as offensive as, uh, some of the callers are alluding to. I think that we need to take a look at the, a strong look at the educational portion of it. Thank you very much. And, um, I'll wait and see what other comments are made before I can say anything else. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Who would like to go next? Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, gosh, where do I start? Um, I think it's important that we're really clear about what it is exactly that we're trying to do and what the purpose of this ordinance is intended for. If I'm hearing, we need to protect workers. I'm hearing, we need to make sure that our sidewalks are, are not blocked, that every, that, that, that they're ADA accessible. We want to make sure that, you know, folks are not selling things that are counterfeit, you know? I'm, I'm, I'm hearing all the right things that I'm definitely in, in favor for. However, this ordinance doesn't do that. On the contrary, what it's doing is that it's pushing these vendors further into, into, um, into the closet. Rather, rather than us focusing on supporting small entrepreneurship, supporting small businesses, limiting governmental oversight, not having, you know, um, policies that, that are burdensome and make it incredibly difficult for, for businesses to, to, for, for folks to start up their own businesses. We, that's what we're doing with this ordinance and not necessarily, um, addressing the issues that I've heard here tonight. I understand the importance of, you know, supporting our brick and mortar businesses. Um, I, I, I really do and I know that they're suffering, but going after the little guy on the street is not the solution. I mean, call Mitch McConnell because he's really the problem. But, you know, ultimately, right, we need to be very, I, I want us to be very clear about what this ordinance is going to do. Requiring a life scan, a background check is just biased and punitive. Um, it, 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 it discourages folks from actually doing street vending. It discourages folks from, from going into the business because of the process that, because the process is delayed. And although a social security is not required and a life scan can still be processed, it's still asked for in the application. And if you don't require a, if you don't add a social security, your process is going to get, your, that process could be delayed for months. And so I think that if, if what we're trying to, to resolve here is, you know, you know, again, workers' rights, if what we're trying to resolve here is, you know, making our sidewalks, sidewalks and, and, and streets accessible and, and prevent blockage, then let's do that and not harm small entrepreneurship. We're in the time of COVID. Everybody is struggling and, and rather than us putting barriers that make it impossible for people to make a living is not the solution. It's not the, this is anti-business. This is us saying that we only value certain businesses with a certain amount of capital. And quite honestly, we all know that the vast majority of people who are owners, who are, who are street vendors, who are owners of street vending comp, uh, push cards, you know, oftentimes they are immigrants, communities of color. And, you know, right now this country is having a reckoning with, with racism and racist policies that are systematically ingrained that make it impossible for immigrants and again, people of color to make it. And here in the little city of Santa Maria, we are doing our part in, in making it more difficult and adding more systematic barriers that make it difficult for people to get by. And for us to do this during the time of COVID is harsh and not okay. If we want to address these other issues that were brought up here tonight, let's do that. But I have no, I mean, I hear no problems when people are saying, let's open a new Walmart. They also mistreat their employees. I mean, let, I mean, let's, let's be real about what we really want to, what the intent is, intent is for this ordinance.
Ms. Waterfield?
Madam Mayor and City Council, looking at this ordinance regulations for sidewalk vendors, I clearly understand what our city attorney is doing here. I have no doubt that this regulation, this ordinance is gonna make it a safer place. We are always talking about our businesses, our brick and mortar businesses, and yes, during this time of COVID, they are struggling very hard, which has pushed a lot of people to go out into the vending business, street vending business, especially those coming from the outside and coming in. Councilmember Cordero said it very clearly, that they take our money and they leave this city. There is no multiplier effect that stays in this city at all whatsoever. And if you want to talk good business practice, that's exactly what we're doing, is getting rid of those that would bring the other vendors that are legitimate down. And I agree with our city attorney that said, we're protecting those other vendors that choose to go out there on the street, who live within the city of Santa Maria, who do abide by our laws and regulations. City, the Chamber of Commerce has offered that they would help to establish these vendors at no cost and to educate them. Our city attorney's office and our cold compliance office have both said the same thing. This is a free service to the vendors. Yes, COVID is, is, is ravishing this country, but is also ravishing our brick and mortar businesses. We can't give certain, cer- certain privileges to other businesses while we do not do it to the others. That is truly unfair. So, um, I, I look at this ordinance and I see it's a very fair ordinance. It explains everything what we're trying to do and, um, those that don't like it, maybe they have something to hide, but we're making it perfectly clear that come and let us help you establish businesses and be successful. And I agree with my partner, co-partner, Cordero, and with our city, uh, attorney's office that I, I do want to push this through. I think this is time that we do this. And in other times where we had workshops, that was non-COVID workshops. Now we're having these people coming in and if we don't do this, they're gonna flee into Santa Maria. They're gonna know that we have nothing to stand on here and anybody from anywhere that can come in and take up a corner in the city of Santa Maria. And that is not what we want for our city. So Madam Mayor, I, I am ready to, uh, vote and approve on this one.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah. Question in regards, well, it has been discussed about how difficult would be to get appropriate, how, you know, their requirements, how difficult it is, everything. And I have a experience working with, is, uh, small business owners during the downtown Fridays. I used to coordinate that event and it is a process that sometimes can be difficult, can be time consuming, but, uh, when you have the guidance of somebody is, uh, that actually was my role, working with small business owners to get it through. And in that regard, inside, how, how long does it take to get the life scan, uh, process? Do, do we have like a timeline or, or something specific?
I believe it's, um, I would say within a week or several days, I believe. I can, I can try to test, find out why we're in this session.
Perfect. And, yeah, that was one of the, um, because, and the other, the time process, so we're talking about maybe a couple of weeks or do we have a, something?
Again, again, the, the intent is come in and bring your application and we'll get you back out on the street. We're not going to tell people while their application is pending that they cannot vend. Our issue is we, we simply want to get a registration of these folks who are out vending. So I'm confident we can come up with internal, um, application processes to not inhibit people being out on the street. I don't, there, there is no intent to keep, keep people from operating. There is an intent to keep people from operating that we have no information on. That's part of the issue. And, and to respond, if I may, to, um, Ms. Soto's comment, one of the items is many of these folks don't have any kind of documentation at all and, and that would be helpful for us to, to be able to have. Just, just straight up have an application and we can get you back out on the street. But not having any information, not providing us any information is, is difficult for us.
So then we have a fast-tracking process for the vendors?
At least we have, at least we have a start and we have a start and we have a start for the companies that are putting employees out on the streets here too. That's part of it as well.
Any other comments? Finished, okay. Yes, Ms. Soto?
Thank you. Um, you know, I, after hearing the comments of our city attorney, I, I would open it up for us to maybe postpone this to another meeting or next meeting and also ask if may, if, if, I mean, I don't know what other businesses really require a life scan. I mean, gun shops, I'm assuming, but I mean, what other business, I mean, people sell alcohol and they don't, they're not, they don't require, are they required to have a life scan? And what, what kind of effect will this have also on like people who are like Girl Scouts and are outside of a, of a store wanting to sell cookies and lemonades, lemonade? Um, you know, oftentimes, you know, I, I'm having conversations with people and I'm, and we're reminded of, of, you know, barbecues downtown on a Saturday or Sunday. What's going to happen to folks who are doing fundraisers? Like, are, is this ordinance also going to have an impact on them? And so, um, I, I, I agree that there does need to be a level of regulation, right? But what we are seeing here is just, it's just, it's, it's overdue. It's, it's not overdue, it's, um, it's over, it's overkill. It's overkill, to be quite honest. And so, I mean, I'd be happy to, to have the city attorney, you know, go back and, and revisit some of the items that, you know, community have concern, have concerns with and have a vote then.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Okay, um, I'm gonna make my comments now. You know, this, this is our community. I've had, um, several people contact me through emails and phone calls and are very, very frustrated by what's going on with the vendors. Back when, with a different council, that we did pass the flower vendor, we had flower vendors on, I don't know how many corners of the city and we were contacted by the business people, by the brick and mortar, several business people contacted us because it was cutting into their bus, their flower business. And these vendors were not licensed. A lot of the product was stolen product and was being sold on our city corner. So, so when we, we enacted the, um, that ordinance, it was very effective. Uh, and so I, I think it's really important, this is our community, this is our community we're talking about and protecting our community and our residents in this community. I, I guess I'm the only one here that has been in business and I, I want to say that the small business in our community, and you go up and down West Main, you go down Blosser and many places on Broadway, these are all immigrants. We are a community of immigrants. These people are struggling today and I think these people need our support. These are, these are the risk takers. This is what, ninety percent of, of the backbone This is what, 90% of the backbone of our country are the small business people, and they really, really do need our support. Now, the complaints that I have heard about the flower vendors for months now going on, and I think that we have an obligation to protect the businesses in the city of Santa Maria. If those people who lived, and it sounds like most of them live out of the area, I was sitting in my car, I had gotten out of the Rite Aid drugstore on, right across the street here, and a truck pulled up with a bunch of flowers in the truck and then was giving them to people that came up, and they were going to go out and sell them. So I did immediately call the police, and by the time they got there, it was too late, but I did give them the license plate number. One time I witnessed one of these large, large trucks, and I can't, maybe an 18-wheeler or something, with people coming out of there with carts. And these people were brought into our community, and this has been a few years back, these people were brought into the city of Santa Maria to do sales. When you are a businessperson, you have a business license, you have rent to pay, you have insurances, and I think most businesses do require liability insurance, at least our business did and people that I know did. You have payroll, you have payroll taxes, and you have the product you have to buy and a resale license if you have to do that. But this is all the stuff that the business people have to do in the city of Santa Maria. I do not object to the background checks. I don't want anyone selling anything near schools that would be a detriment to any of our children. When I see the fruit sales going on, these people are cutting fruit and selling fruit, there's people around there, this is, we are going through a pandemic, there is no social distancing going on, they are not washing their hands, and they are cutting up all these fruits, and I haven't been close enough to see what all the fruit is, but some of it is pineapple. Pineapple is not indigenous to our area. And the corn sales is another thing. So where is public health in all this? They won't even touch it. You know, and to me, that is a real public health issue during the pandemic. The barbecues on Broadway are all under public health. And so they are checked by the public health and they are checked periodically. I don't know how much public health is doing now, but they are checked periodically. I think the vendors themselves, they know what they're doing, they're coming into our community and selling their product. They also have a responsibility, and they know what they're doing. These people are not dumb. And I just ask you, if they don't have any ID on them, why don't they have ID on them? I think that when we say that these working conditions that are, to me, are brutal, why would you want these vulnerable people be put in these conditions? Why would you want the most vulnerable people being exploited? And, you know, we know that trafficking is going on all over us. It's out there in Santa Maria, it's up and down the coast, and we know that. I just really, it really, it bothers me that I see people supporting this kind of activity when it is not in the best interest of the residents of the city of Santa Maria. And my responsibility is to the residents of Santa Maria, the people that live here. And I'm not even talking about whether they're documented or undocumented. We have people here that are extremely productive. And when I take that oath of office, that is really important to me. And so, you know, I will be supporting this. I think it's important. I've had so many phone calls and emails over months. I keep turning them over to our city attorney. He knows, he knows that very well. But I just think that we need to protect the vulnerable people and especially, especially here in our city where we can make a difference. And those are my only comments. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, you know, I'm trying to listen and be appreciative of both sides of this equation here. I'm having some difficulty understanding what the concern is for us as a community to know who is doing business in this community. Who is it? If we have something happening in town at Roscoe's Economy Plumbing, and they say, well, I went up there to do this, this, and this, and something happened, at least we have something, a business license, a responsible person, an owner, the proprietor, the supervisor, somebody is going to be able to give us something about what's going on in that business. Whereas if you have something happen under the current flow of information, we don't know who these people are, and unless you are fortunate enough to hold on to something in the event that something happens, then they're gone. And who knows where they could be? So I don't have any issues with knowing who's doing business in the community. I'm not as focused on just being concerned about the people that live in Santa Maria. I'm kind of concerned about the people that are being brought here and left under these, what I would say so far as less than human conditions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm dropping you off here at the street corner. I'll be back at eight o'clock tonight to pick you up. Did they have anything to eat? Did they have anything to drink? Did they have any place to go to the bathroom? Did they have a break? Did they have a decent place to rest and recuperate like we require coffee breaks, this kind of thing, rest time? Even some of our field workers have shaded areas that they get to go to and have their breaks. So, you know, I don't see what's wrong with knowing who's doing business and making sure that these people that are doing business are treating those employees in an equitable manner. So I'm going to be in favor of this. And if we find things happen, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but if we find that, hey, wait a second, we're kind of over-regulating here or we're doing something wrong, we can change the ordinance. Am I correct? We can change it in a heartbeat. Well, maybe a couple of heartbeats, but I mean, there's space for us to make adjustments in the event that we need to do so. And I think some of the things that Ms. Soto is saying, that if we find that this is over-regulating and it's not having this happen, and we have a number of people that are residents of Santa Maria and they can't get this going, then maybe we need to take another look at it. But I think we need to get, move along with this thing. So I'm prepared to vote, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much for listening to me.
Is that a motion, Mr. Cordero?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm just clarifying that the motion is to introduce the ordinance for first reading and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, adding chapter 420 to Title IV of Santa Maria Municipal Code relating, excuse me, regulating sidewalk vendors. And Councilmember Cordero made the motion, and Councilmember...
That would be my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Hi.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Soto.
No.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Motion carries. If you recall, Mr. Cordero, and I'm sure you do, years ago when we talked about street signs, we talked about the sandwich boards and on the sidewalk and how, I know you were really concerned about how it impedes people getting around. I think that would be really, really interesting also. I was just now thinking about that when we talked about the sidewalks. Okay. The next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next meeting of the City Council is January 19th. We have a number of items on the agenda. Of note, one is the award of bid for the Smith Inos House. If you haven't been by there lately, near Costco, you'll notice that the house does have a new roof on it. We were able to get that on before the rainstorms. And this bid that the council will have an opportunity to award will be for the structural improvements of the outside of the building. We do have funding for the landscaping and for the inside of the building to proceed. So it is nice seeing that house coming together and being stabilized and preserved. Also on the agenda is an agreement with Caltrans for our partnership with them or for our cooperation with them to move our utilities as they repave Broadway up and down Santa Maria this summer is when they have scheduled to do that. And that will be an important project. If you notice, Broadway is quickly deteriorating with their lack of maintenance due to, they're intentionally not maintaining it ahead of this major project later this summer. So it'll be nice to have Broadway reconstructed. You'll have the opportunity to appoint your board appointees, board and commission appointees at the next meeting, and we have been sending you information and will continue to do so of who is reapplying and who is applying for your opportunity to appoint them to boards and commissions. And then we have an appeal for the Centennial Gardens Housing Project, and that's the housing project south of Battles, west of the railroad and Depot. And I went to the planning commission last month and appealed to the City Council for January 19th, and that concludes my report.
So we'll have oral reports of council members, and Mr. Cordero, we'll start with you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. On 12/16, I did the Ben Hayes Show, which I understand tonight will be my last Ben Hayes Show. And I got to say, I really enjoy meeting with him. He's a great guy, and I know that most of us have met with him and talked to him many times, but he's an exciting person to have around and help us with what we do. On the 23rd, I went to some of the lights in the community with the assistance of the map that was put on by Parks and Rec, and it was very nice. On the 24th, I attended the car donation giveaway at the mall by Ed Carcary, and that was really moving to see a young lady, a single mother that was struggling and had a special needs child, and it was really moving to see her receive this car that was valued at about $10,000. And on the 26th, I went to see the rest of the lights that I could, because it was so long. It was a great, great show, and there was just, some homes really went insanely, they were insanely impressive, I guess I want to say, with regard to how much work they did with dressing up their home and celebrating the Christmas holiday. And that would be it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Not into report.
Ms. Waterfield? Mr. Escobedo?
Not into report.
Oh, okay. On the 16th, I attended the Mayor's and Council Members Roundtable with California Cities Virtual Meeting. On the 17th, I did the SBKag Monthly Board Meeting, and we do meet in person in the morning. In the afternoon, did the APCD Board of Directors Meeting. I did the drive-by farewell to Chief Champion, and that was really easy. It was just in and out, in one driveway and out the other. No, no, we did, we did chit-chat. On the 18th, I did the prayer at the Christmas banquet for the rescue mission at Forest Square Church and helped them give out some of the gifts. And I missed the Dutch Brothers Coffee VIP thing, and I, that was a...
Oh, I forgot about that. I went to that today.
You did? On Monday, the 28th of December?
It was just a drive-by. We didn't go inside or anything, just drove through it.
Yeah. Anyway, I wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge and close the meeting in honor of Al Bol, who was a city employee, and Mr. Cordero, you did know him?
Yes.
And his wife, Troila, and our condolences to their family.
He was a really nice man. Never heard him complain. He did his job. He was just really a pleasure to talk with from time to time when it was, and I'm sorry to see him go. He was 80 years old. I didn't realize that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.